...will convene, the clerk will take the role, please.
Counselor Ponti? Counselor Reposa?
Here.
Chair Neil.
Here. I'd like to just mention that Counselor Ponti couldn't be here because he's out of town working, so that's why he's not here this evening. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. First on our agenda is citizens' input. I don't believe we have any. Second of the minutes from October 16th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye, motion passes. Number three is an email communication regarding a water bill and a request for review referred February 15th, 2024. I'm happy to say that this matter has already been resolved with actually a happy ending, which made it even better. So with that, I will accept.
Motion, grant's leave to withdraw.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to take items four and five together.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to lift items four and five from the table.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, all motions pass. Number four is a resolution, Administrator of Community Utilities be invited to committee on Public Works and Transportation meeting to discuss solutions to the flooding issues on Anderson Street. Number five, the Committee on Public Works and Transportation discuss flooding issues at 50 Anderson Street specifically. So the resolutions are very short. Counselor Lee had put in this originally, whereas Fall River's been making attempts to address flooding issues, and whereas a constituent recently reported to several city councils his flooding concerns on Anderson Street, now therefore be it resolved that the Administrator of Community Utilities be invited to a future meeting of the Committee on Public Works and Transportation to discuss solutions to the flooding issues in that area. And the second resolution was put in by Counselor Kamara, be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Public Works and Transportation convene to discuss flooding issues at 50 Anderson Street. So with that, we'll invite Mr. Ferlin, Mr. Barlow. If you can eat both, each state your name, address, position for the record.
Richard Barlow, 50 Anderson Street, Fall River taxpayer.
Good evening. Paul Ferlin, the Administrator of Community Utilities.
Counselor Reposa?
Mr. Ferlin, I know you have a PowerPoint here, so I mean, I guess the basic question is where do we stand with the flooding issues in that area, what has been done to this point, and maybe you can shed some light on the whole situation for us.
Yeah, if you want, what I'll do, I'll take a run through my PowerPoint presentation. It's about the South Wataupa Pond, which Sucker Brook is what we're talking about, and that directly feeds into the South Wataupa Pond. It starts up in Stafford Pond in Tivitan, Rhode Island, which the City of Fall River owns, comes down through Tivitan, crosses underneath Route 24 and Rhode Island William Canning Boulevard, continues heading down, passes by the end of Lark Street, Anderson Street, and a couple other streets, heads into the wetland area next to the 994 Jefferson Street complex, underneath some of those mill buildings, and then eventually makes its way into South Wataupa Pond. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna run through, start off, you know, I've done a couple of presentations on the work we've been doing on South Wataupa Pond, public presentations, and that's where a lot of this work that we've been able to get done has been generated. So I'm gonna run a little bit through the partners that we have on the project, some of the work that we've done on the project, some of the stuff specific to the Sucker Brook, which is what causes the flooding over in the Anderson Street area, and then we can go on from there. So some of the partners that we have on the project, we've been working with UMass Dartmouth, Bay Coast Bank was the initial originator that provided funding for the South Wataupa Pond study. We're working with Westport and Tivitan. City of Fall River and the council have also been great. The council allocated ARPA funds towards this project, and we always get support from our state rep and the senators as well, as well as representative from Rhode Island. Some of the new partners that we brought on recently, Liberty Utilities has worked with us, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which I'll talk a little bit about later, which paid for the most recent study, and we have the next steps hopefully involve them as well. We've partnered with Atlantis Charter School, and they're gonna be hopefully part of this solution with their students, making this an educational experience as well. And then we also used groundwork south coast in some of the past work that we've done. So a little bit about, I'll talk about what we've done, where it's going, and how it's going. So if you look at the bottom left there, that little circle, that's kind of the whole entire watershed for South Wataupa Pond. You have Stafford Pond that goes into it, DeValle Pond feeds into Sordi Pond, which feeds into South Wataupa Pond. But what we'll be talking about is the left-hand side there, Stafford Pond coming around into South Wataupa Pond. So, you know, it's tough to talk about the flooding on Anderson Street and the Sucker Brook and Sucker Brook drainage area without looking at the whole entire thing. You know, we have the flooding just at the end of Anderson Street, but it involves everything upstream from there and everything downstream, any restrictions. And all of this, again, we're trying to make the best ecological outcome with this whole entire project to help improve water quality within South Wataupa Pond, which is another issue that we have. So just a brief overview, and I'll take my point to go up here and just...
Can we get a microphone for him? Paul, if we just get a microphone for you, so the public at home can hear you. Thank you.
All right. First up, I've used the mic here. So this whole entire area is the Sucker Brook wetland area. So Sucker Brook starts over in Stafford Pond over in Tivitan, Rhode Island, comes down through, crosses Stafford Road here, crosses, I believe this is Locke Street that comes off of here, or Progress Street, continues down. 50 Anderson Street is right over here, right in this corner. The actual brook, the channelized brook, comes through this area, crosses, comes into this wetland area, has a channelized area there with a culvert in this area, continues through this marshy, unproductive wetland area, comes down into the 994 Jefferson Street complex. So this is where spectrum lighting is, the rowing center is down over here, continues through this complex by the rowing center out into South Wataupa Pond. So what we really started with in the last project that we did in relation to South Wataupa Pond was we took, and we took a look at a couple of different drainage areas that come down into it. This being the primary one, which we did a hydraulic analysis and study of this whole entire Sucker Brook and how it comes through. Because one of the things that we test consultant with was not only looking at being able to do the ecological benefits for South Wataupa Pond, but also being able to improve the flooding that does occur within these areas. So they identified a couple of different spots along here that are restrictions, and we'll go over those in a minute. So you have the crossing through Locke Street that comes down, and then comes down, there's a culvert here, 36, four-foot berm with a 36-inch culvert. As you come down through here, it crosses underneath the foundation of some of those buildings, and, you know, there's a 10-by-3 culvert area that is shown as a slight restriction. Down in this area where we put the new bridge in, that crossing is good and doesn't have much restrictions. So this whole wetland area also gets water from this unnamed area that comes through. So this is New Hall Street, Wood Street down in this area. There's drainage from this area, the low spot, that comes through the center of the cemetery, comes into this wetland area. Some of it goes into Bleachery Pond, then from Bleachery Pond is dumped into the wetland area, Sucker Brook, and makes its way out. So this whole entire drainage area, you're talking about Stafford Pond and everything that feeds from Stafford Pond, you're talking about everything that comes from, comes from the casino, comes from South Coast Marketplace, comes from any of those areas, eventually all comes down and comes through this area.
Mr. Ferlin, if I could, while, while you're on that point.
Yep.
So in that Anderson Street area, and, and the, obviously the cause of that flooding, I think we've identified, but what has, what particularly has changed in the mass number of years to try to reduce that flooding? What improvements have been made?
So over here, we went out there, it was probably seven years ago, there was a, there was an old swale that ran down the side from the end of Anderson Street, went out and dumped out into the marsh area. That was, that was filled in, there was a berm at the end of it. We went in there and cleared that out with, with our own internal staff. I think that helped some of the isolating flooding that comes down the street and would push out. Wouldn't be able to push out, so I think that helped that. Other than that, a lot of the flooding, and speaking with Mr. Barlow, comes in from the back here, comes down. So Sucker Brook comes down through here, starts to fill up these wetlands, and that's where the property's affected. You can see how close those wetland area and those bermed areas are to the 50 Anderson Street, as well as some of the other properties. Again, and 50 Anderson Street is the low property within that, that entire area.
Mr. Ferlin?
Yes?
So as I look at this, if I'm, I mean, I'm a distance away, so even though I have my glasses on, but is it, is it at all possible or feasible to put in an additional culvert so that you'd be directing more water away from that area?
Yep, so we'll talk about some of the resolutions. Well, the next slide talks about some of the restrictions, and then we'll go into some of the potential resolutions. So this right here is just showing Sucker Brook, some of the areas. If you look at the bottom picture, the bottom picture there, that's the 36-inch culvert that is on the, that is in the berm that crosses underneath. And then on the right-hand side, that's where Sucker Brook starts to enter the mill complex and some of the foundation archways there that have been, that have been closed up or possibly, you know, filled in with sediment over time. So this is showing Sucker Brook restoration in distant conditions. Again, this is showing a picture of the areas, blue being the wetted areas with some channelized, with some channelized locations. This is part of the hydraulic analysis and hydraulic study that's done to be able to show, based on elevation, where some of those areas are, how water crosses and moves down. We took a look at it, so you look at the precipitation, you know, one inch is essentially a one-year storm, and then it goes up from there, five-year storm, 4.10, 10-year storm, 4.85, 25, 6.7. And again, when we look at this, and when we look at the solutions of this project, you know, and I've said this on most all the drainage projects that we do, are we gonna be able to build something big enough to say that it's never gonna flood again? No, because, you know, the next rainstorm that we get may be a higher intensity than we've ever seen in the past. We all see what's going on, you know, everybody remembers the beginning of this, this past summer, all those high-intensity rainstorms that we got. And that's what really hurts these areas. When we get the slow, moderate rains, locations like this, yeah, there's gonna be, you know, that's a wetland area, there's gonna be water that's moving through there and going through there, but we don't get the extensive flooding that impacts the residents, you know, like we do when we get the high-intensity rainstorms.
Yeah, and it also, I'm sure, it also depends on the level of the water table at the time as well.
Yeah.
And if, if your water table is at maximum, that takes nothing for it to
Right.
settle on top.
Right, exactly. You know, you look at just the storm that we got on Sunday, that was about an inch and a half, inch and three-quarters of rain, depending on where it was measured in the city. Typically, we say that an inch of rain will bring in three inches, raise the South Wataupa Pond three inches. This past rainstorm brought it up almost five and a half inches. That's just because the whole entire watershed is so saturated that we're, that it just runs right off and comes right down, so.
So how large of a rainstorm do we have to have for, to affect their property?
So looking, we never really did an analysis looking specifically at that property, and the problem is, it's such a big watershed, it's such a big wetland area that, that, you know, kind of goes into, it's, it's tough to say that, you know, the storm on this day would flood the intensity. And again, it, it's a lot about intensity. So we can say an inch and a half of rain, if we're getting that over a 10, 12-hour period evenly, probably wouldn't affect their property. But if we're talking to an inch and a half of rain in an hour or half hour, then they're So alternatives analysis, what we looked at for this area, and again, a couple of things we're looking at repairing the flooding within the Anderson Street and other areas that are affected by this whole entire watershed, as well as we're looking for improvements to the water quality of the South Wataupa Pond.
And to clarify, Mr. Ferlin, have any of these alternatives been decided on, acted on, or were these just ideas that could possibly happen?
No, none of these have been decided on. There is not funding in place for any of these at this time. Again, we did kind of base on, based on our study and based on our cost-benefit analysis that we've done now with the limited design that we have done, we're leaning towards, towards alternative solutions. And again, that would be in the next step in the design, we'd see what works best, what's most cost-effective to be able to, to do that. And we'll talk about that in a slide in just a little bit. But some of these, this area over here, to be able to get the water that comes in Sucker Brook and move it into the, what we'll call in the northern marsh, increase the capacity of the culvert through the berm from a 36-inch pipe to a three-foot tall by eight-foot wide culvert. And then you could also, instead of doing that, you could do a box conduit through there, three-foot by 16-foot. So those, those are two options through there. Up through this area, as it runs underneath the buildings, is to restore the arch, arches that we saw just a couple of slides ago, and make it where it's a 10-foot wide by three-foot high conduit now, make it so it's 10-foot wide by roughly about six feet high, which would allow additional water to be able to move out of the northern marsh towards South Wataupa. When you get into this area, restore open channel, so down through this area, you're gonna be taken and pushing the water faster through here, from here to here, and then you're pushing it faster from here to here, then that means that you need to open these up and be able to push more water through there. So you can open up, open up the open channels through here and restore the open channels. Within these wetland areas, what really should be done, if you've looked at those, they're, they're wetland areas, but the vegetation in there isn't, isn't very conducive to be able to take phosphorus or nutrients out of the water, doesn't filter it properly, so we'd really like to restore those wetlands back to a more ecological beneficial wetland area, which also does help the flow of water moving through there as well.
If I could ask, I don't know if I'm gonna cut you off, but here, but as far as the all, these alternatives, you've mentioned that you're kind of in a very early phase. So in a perfect world, timeline-wise, when do you think that your department would look at, maybe possibly moving forward some of these alternatives?
So again, so we're looking to apply for a grant for the design. That grant, I expect out within a couple of weeks for the application process. I've already, you know, we did a pre-application conference with the grant people, and they seemed to, their feedback was great about this project, they were excited about it. You know, it hits a bunch of, a bunch of the checkboxes that they're looking for, ecological benefits, infrastructure benefits, reduce flooding and impact into residents, those, those are huge things as part of the MVP program. The expectation, if, if a grant is awarded, usually in the June timeframe of this year, then the design process to be able to get this stuff up to 100% design, I would expect would take about a year. Through that process, there's a lot of public outreach, too. You know, we'd be partnering with Atlantis Charter School and some local grassroots organizations to be able to do some focus groups with the business communities out there, with the residents in that area that may be affected, to be able to, to get the whole entire design. And tonight, I'm talking a lot about the, the infrastructure portion and the ecological benefit. There's a third portion to the design of this whole entire project, and that is to, to make, to use it as an educational area. One of the concepts that we looked at originally a while ago had a, had an elevated platform that went through the wetland with different educational stops along the way that could be used by school groups or just people going out to that area. There's talk of a spur from the bike rail coming down to this area, so it would connect directly in with that as well.
Is it at all possible to raise the height of the berm so that there would be less flooding from the overflow?
So speaking specifically about Anderson Street, 50 Anderson Street, which is right over here, essentially Sucker Brook comes down, comes through a channelized area. The problem is, once you start to get a rainstorm, the channel comes up, the flow comes up. As you can see, this area, it flows into here, this area here as well. Once this channel starts to come up, this is all riparian area over here, which means essentially it's a floodplain. So it's designed, once the channel comes out, it spreads out and moves. So what ends up happening is the water comes down and enters this wetland area as, as well, and that carries some of this water down through here, through this whole entire area. You know, the real fix, we're not really able to build up a berm in this area because eventually then it's just gonna find its way around the berm one way or the other. This berm over here, it's not that water's coming back from this way, we need to figure out to get the water out that way quicker. So again, overview, so this is a look at, at some of the different alternatives and how to do alternate one and two, flood mitigation by increasing the marsh berm culvert capacity. So that's being able to open up that culvert to be able to get the, the water through faster. Alternate three and four, by restoring the open channel downstream, and alternate five, improving the water quality by improving the wetland. The graphs on the right show some of the different studies that, some of the things that were done when they looked at the study, the flood elevations and the height of the water during different storms and different alternates, and then the lower one shows how that would change if those alternates were, were implemented. So implement alternative two to mitigate the flooding, replace the, the culvert crossing that was the, what we saw at the point to be the most economical to be able to do. What that's gonna do, that's gonna take the flooding on Anderson Street in a 25-year storm. Currently, our model shows that it floods at 1.7 feet. That would take it so that it would only be 0.7 feet, which again, would definitely help the property at 50 Anderson Street. Implementing alternative five will help all of the ecological benefits, it'll help, help filter out all of the, some of the things coming down from Dickinson Street, coming down from upstream, it'll take a lot of that out. So again, just on this slide, it talks about the future public access and education during the project. So this is just some real rough cost estimates that we did during the initial stage of studies. So the flood mitigation alternative cost, 840 for the first part, and then to do the downstream area, we were at 1.8 to be able to, to carry that through.
Total?
Those, those, those two added together.
Yeah. So we're looking at 2.6.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and the grant you're, the grant you're applying for at this point covers what part of these costs?
Um, so...
Very early stage of it?
Yeah, so, so we currently, we're looking to apply for, it's, we haven't decided on the final number yet, depends on what we need for public outreach and, you know, continued full study, but we're looking 400,000 to 600,000. So again, just on the South Wataupa Pond, one thing that we're working on is the nutrient inactivation or potentially doing something in the pond, but it, it means a lot from the watershed that comes down. All that water that comes down into South Wataupa Pond, through Sucker Brook, through the interceptor drains, through all the runoff that comes from all the properties, all has phosphorus nutrients, trying to reduce that is, is one thing that we need to look at, too, for the ecological benefit. So future pursuits, what we're doing, what we're always doing is advancing our storm order maps and drainage. We wanna make sure that we do outreach and use this for a learning experience, and, you know, this, this is gonna involve permitting through conservation and possibly NEPA reviews, so there's gonna be wildlife studies that are gonna need to be done out there, as well as plant studies and other things as we move forward. This goes through some of the partners that we've, that we've brought on and funding that we've been able to get. Again, a number of different agencies have provided funding for this project, as well as the additional work we did on South Wataupa. Again, what people, individual people can do to help drainage issues like this, help water quality in general, just a couple of five different steps. Build healthy soils, so you wanna be able to, you know, properly have your grass so that it use, so that it soaks up water. You don't wanna over-fertilize, that's one thing that, that everybody loves fertilizer to make their grass nice and green. Go with an all-natural type fertilizer, not something that's a chemical phosphorus-based.
Don't have to worry about that with me, I have three dogs.
Natural fertilizer.
Amen.
That's it. Mow your grass, pick up your grass clippings, dispose of them through, through the proper disposal means. Forover, we have the collective... disposal means, wherever we have the collections and also available to be dropped off. So smart watering, you don't wanna overwater stuff so that things soak up the water when the rain comes, and then compost any of your leaves as well. Leaves is also a big contributor, not only to blocking drainage channels and issues of, you know, catch basins and things like that, but then also the phosphorus from the leaves runs, runs off. So, again, I just wanted to kinda give you a broad overview, it's, you know, I know we're here talking about the flooding on Anderson Street and, you know, Mr. Barlow has been impacted multiple times in the past due to the issues out there, but it's, the issue isn't isolated to just there, it's a large-scale issue that affects multiple things and it's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of acres that come down and create this issue, so.
I yields. Go for it.
That's when that flood was, yeah, but then we had known another time, and it was just a couple of years ago, Paul came down today then.
Yep.
Like I say, Paul's been very eager on trying to do everything he can to help out with the situation.
So-
Money's short and the list is long.
Yeah. But in, so, in reality, is there anything at this point that, that we can do to, that's pretty bad, it's so flooded that I thought the picture was upside down, but it was the reflection in the water. To alleviate some of their problems, I mean, they've been battling this for what, 14 years?
Yeah.
And every time they come down, it's pretty much a non-answer, and they just continue to go through this havoc.
No, again, and it's, and it's a very tough situation, and all of the flooding areas around the city, we, you know, we discussed this on multiple different areas, you know, but to fix, there's no easy, quick, cheap way to fix these issues, you know, just the scale of it and the area that comes down. If there was a cheap, easy way to fix it that anybody saw, I'm sure we'd be more than willing to, to go that way. You know, if I knew that I could apply for a grant and fix Mr. Barlow's problem tomorrow, you know, we would've, we would've done it, you know, to then. You know, you, you talk back to 2010, 2010, South Wataupa Pond was 36 inches above, above full pond during, during that high, high intensity rainstorm. I think it was 36, we got over 30 inches of rain in 30 days in that spring. There was multiple houses around South Wataupa Pond that were, that were flooded or underwater. That year was an extreme event, and we have had multiple extreme events since then. This spring, we saw a, a slew of high-intensity rainstorms, you know, and you have this, the areas that, that get affected, Stafford Square, Bedford Street, you know, we have all of those flooding areas. You look at some of the areas where we've, where we've made improvements, and it's large costly improvements that we've done. Garden Street and the bottom of all those streets off of New Boston Road, Acacia Vincent, that flooded for years. We invested money in that drainage area and were able to make the improvements needed over there. Hyacinth Street, the two areas over there, but again, what it takes is the design, it takes the process to be able to go through, to be able to properly design the project and then fund the project and construct the project.
So, best-case scenario at this point, there probably isn't anything that's gonna alleviate anything probably for at least a year and a half, two years?
Correct, right, again, right now, you know, that would be if, if you guys allocate, if the council allocated an authorization tomorrow to be able to, you know, move forward and fix this whole entire problem, that would be the timeframe that we'd be looking at. You know, I would say that the design, to be able to fully design, even fully straight-through design this project, you're probably looking at about a year. With permitting, a year to a year and a half, actually, 'cause you have Conservation Commission, you're gonna have to do a full NEPA review, which is potentially Army Corps of Engineers, which can definitely add some time onto your schedule of designing. This isn't just, you know, being able to design, design a pipe going down the street and go out and construct it, when you're involved in the wetlands and the resource areas that are impacted with the construction that needs to be done to make this better, the permitting can take the most time on the design end.
Well, I think, I feel like in the past, we've come down here and we've heard, oop, sorry, nothing we can do. But, when you're still looking at years, I don't know that I could've tolerated it this long, to be honest.
It's getting tougher and tougher, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, one of these days, some attorney is gonna see this stuff and, and he's gonna say, I can make a boatload of money if this, something happens to this individual's home. And that, that's what I think will happen, I think, you know, some attorneys might be like, I want, I want some money out of this deal. Because, you know, I know Paul's doing everything he can, I mean, you know, I had that problem in front of my house there, when you, you know, in the winter time, it would rain all the time because they, they crowned the street. Then I talked to Paul about it, and he says, I'll make sure it's taken care of. When they, when they did the gas lines, sure enough, they, they fixed it up there. But then up the street, where they put the berm up the street, they took it out. So now all the water from Dickens Street runs back down and, and the car street and right down Anderson Street, instead of staying on Dickinson Street, they took it out. And I told the guy, I said, look, you can see the berm going away across. He says, well, there's nothing I can do about it, and they just left it flat.
And there's no way we can get that berm replaced?
Uh, I did make, Mr. Barlow mentioned that, that to me earlier, I'm gonna take a look at it tomorrow and see, see what can be done. Again, if there was a gas company that went, went through there, they should've replaced it as it was, so it'll be looked at.
I talked to Paul before, he's the one who had it done.
Can you advise us if you have that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He says, no, we should have berm put in there, when they did, redid the street, then they did that berm in place, you know, so.
Yeah.
I like his idea, you know, with, with, you know, trying to do educational stuff back there, because I walked back there a few times and it, it's actually really nice back there, you just can't walk back there 'cause there's so much, you know, brush and briars, like I said before, you can't walk that stream now. But it would be really, really nice, and like I said, you know, tie it into the bike path would be really nice, you know. People will, you know, probably take the bike path and ride all the way out there and then, you know, go to Market Basket from, you know, the other side of the city.
How long ago did the gas company do that work?
Uh, that was sometime last year.
So we'll, we, we should theoretically still be within that window of being able to get them to go back and, and restore it to what it was when they ripped it up?
Yeah, again, the gas company is usually, I've always found them to be a pretty decent partner, if they did something incorrectly.
Well, it wasn't the gas company itself that did it, it was the tar, the company who came and tarred after a lot, you know, the-
Yeah.
I forget who it was that did it.
Yeah, the subcontractor-
Yeah, the subcontractor.
Working for the gas company, but I, I'll talk directly to the gas company, 'cause essentially they're responsible.
And this is just, I just hit Paul this now, so, it's nothing I talked to him about before, so.
Right, right.
I just hit him with it now.
Well, that's part of the purpose of the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Look into it. But I do like, you know, the idea of, you know, you know, really looking into, like, making it more educational, you know, be able to go back there.
Yeah, it's a beautiful area in, in the south end, doesn't have, you know, a lot of the, a lot, a spot like that. You have some of the businesses there that, you know, and, you know, when this, if that of an educational portion gets done, you know, to be able to have the people on their lunch breaks, go for walks through there, be able to have the schools, Atlantis is right there, be able to take the kids over, the kids that go to the rowing center program, be able to walk them through there for the educational experience. But again, I sometimes have high hopes and, you know, the, the vision doesn't get made if somebody doesn't have the vision, so.
And if we gave Paul all that upper money for him, he would've fixed a lot of the problems in the city. I know you tried to get more from him, but, you know, it only goes so far.
Yeah, 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 if I'd had my way, he would've had a lot more.
But I think it's a lot of the restrictions that that water's not flowing, is that's what's causing the biggest problems, where it just doesn't flow fast enough and it's just backing up and it's, it's flooding up my property. It's just overcoming to Suckerbrook where it got comp, I believe it got compromised back in 2010, because in, those storms started in the 13th, so 13th and 14th, they had some severe flooding in the city. Then again, on the 22nd and the 24th, 22, 22nd, 23rd and 24th in 2010, and that property had no water problems whatsoever, and there was some heavy rains during that storm. It didn't happen until the 29th, that's when, and now, ever since then, it's just problems with, you know, rain, rainstorms, it just floods right out. 'Cause I think it's just so much water coming over now from that area, you know, from Suckerbrook itself, I think it got compromised and I think it's just coming through.
Yeah, and the key is to, you wanna redirect it and get it out as quickly as it's coming in, otherwise-
Yeah.
And I know Paul does not the kind of guy who wants to do Band-Aids on things, it costs the taxpayers more money, he likes to get it fixed and fix it the right way.
Yeah.
According to some of the articles I read, 'cause I've been doing a lot of research on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, no, you know, you, we can, you can Band-Aid everything for so long and it, you know, you know, and we talked about this before, you know-
Costs more money in the long run.
Yeah, and even so, you know, as Barlow said, well, slow the water coming down, but so you slow the water that's coming down upstream somewhere and then you cause another issue upstream, you know, so then you slow the water down more upstream from there and you cause it, you know, then you're flooding the people off, flooding people on Napoleon Street where Suckerbrook goes through their backyards, you know, then you push it up and you're flooding out the, the other side of Mariano Bishop Boulevard, so, you know, it's, you can't back it up much, you gotta be able to get it out faster.
We should've got a lot of money from the casino, 'cause the casino dumps an awful lot of water into that stream, an awful lot. I mean, all that property, everything, it just runs down in, into Suckerbrook.
Really?
The city dropped the ball back then. I think that was before Paul's time.
You know, there's-
So there's nothing that can be done in terms of drainage for them?
You know, again, I don't know whether I talked to the council about it, or whether it was one of the, one of the committees I was in front of, but, you know, for River Residents, we have the stormwater fee, but that's only within the corporate borders of the city, we don't have the ability to fee anybody outside. You know, now that we're in a partnership with Westport and Tivonin, because all of their watersheds come down essentially into South Wataupa Pond, which we manage the water coming out of South Wataupa Pond, how that partnership moves forward is something that we kinda explore.
Yeah, that would be nice if, if they could have some responsibility in, uh-
Yeah, you know, one of the ways would be to, that the state has available is to be able to create a dam district, so everything within the watershed for a particular dam that it flows into, there could be fees to all of those properties within the watershed to create one of those, it's, it's a bit complicated, it needs to be approved by the municipalities that would be included in that district, so that's, you know, the tough thing to be able to-
You're also talking about a, a city, a town in another state, too.
Correct.
Which gets even more complicated. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Trust me, I'm, I'm trying and exploring, but it's, it's sometimes difficult.
Understood.
It's just so frustrating, we come back here time after time after time, and you walk out feeling like horrible, 'cause we, we still have no remedy, we still can't help them, it, it's-
Correct.
It's so frustrating.
You know, and, and some of these resolutions with 2000, you know, 22, but 2022, we didn't have any of this information. We didn't know where the restrictions were, we didn't know what the problem was, we didn't have the basic hydrology, we didn't have the basic survey for that area. So, you know, even though I'm here explaining this and seems like we're getting nowhere, we're making progress forward.
We're in a better spot than we were a few years ago, I think.
Yeah, based on the dates of the resolution, we were talking 2018, 2011.
What I do now is that, that, that side floods out so much, so I got a two-inch pump and I pump it all the way to the other side, so it soaks into the ground much better. And then, if I didn't do that the other day, I, I probably would've been flooded right out. So it soaks in pretty good the other way, and you get a heavy rain, it's not like every big rainstorm, it's, you, it's like Paul says, if you get so much rain and it's so saturated, like you were saying too, that, that water has no place to go.
It just sits.
So what we need is like a big pump station, just to pump it right to Bleachery Pond.
There's a thought.
Put a pump station right there at the bottom there and pump it right across.
We don't wanna talk what pump stations cost.
If you go down the more, there's, there's, like, on the right here, well, it's not there, but, you know, follow my house all the way down into the wetlands, there's two pipes, they're not very big, they're, well, they're, they're good-sized pipes that go, that take all that water and bring it across.
Yeah, they're good size, but not for the amount of water we're discussing.
Not for the amount of water that we're discussing, it's just not handling it, you know, like I said to Paul, you know, when was that built, you know? And when's the last time it was updated? It was, I don't think it was designed to have all this water dumped into that Suckerbrook like it is now.
You know, back whenever it was constructed, you, there wasn't houses that were, you know-
I was just gonna say that, too, you had a lot more land that could flood and it didn't bother anybody.
Exactly.
Any motions?
I mean, I think we've, we've discussed that there's progress to be made, the, the best-case scenario, we're looking at an update, like Paul said, within a year.
Just my fear now is that, you know, they're talking one to three inches of rain tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So, am I gonna wake up tomorrow morning, my house underwater?
So I, I think that in the terms of the resolutions, we've, we've addressed and discussed the, the purposes of both.
Correct.
The question now is going to lie on, in the future, in your year and a half timeline, the, you know, the person going for your grant, what have you, we'll have to revisit this at a later date, but I think as far as the terms of resolutions, we've addressed them, so.
I would agree.
Unfortunately, there's just no solution to the problem tomorrow, that's, that's where we're at.
Correct.
But clearly, we've, we can all agree that progress has been made since these are both filed and progress will continue to be made, it's just a matter of when we see that final day.
So, I suppose we could make a motion to either, for an update and, and a certain length of time? We could probably withdraw these resolutions at this point where they have been addressed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to grant leaves, withdraw both four and five.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, well, do you wanna make a motion to, for an update?
Yeah, we could file one.
File a resolution to, uh-
Yeah, the, could we make, we'll file a resolution by behalf of the committee to review the status of grant and the progress toward the alternative solutions to addressing the overall flooding issues.
And you said your first timeline in terms of seeing if the grant is gonna go forward would be what?
Historically MVP, they've usually, usually by June, we hear about that grant typically, but the, there is no set deadline that they have to award by or anything like that.
Okay, so we're probably looking at July?
Yeah, so may, maybe we even do a quarterly update on the progress of this, and then we're looking at four quarters in the, in a matter of a year. And then we can keep not only Mr. Barlow updated with what's going on in the, in the progress, but also the public at large, that progress is being made toward addressing these issues and where those steps have been. I think Mr. Phil has did a good job in presenting the data, which-
Ironically, the first quarter would be July.
There you go, data's good for everything, so, I would, I would, the committee could forward that, put together that resolution to-
Yep.
To monitor. I'll make them, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think his idea, you know, would, like I said, you know, fixing it up back there would be, you know, great for the whole entire city, really, you know, for people to enjoy. As I walk back there, and you can't really walk back there, but it's, it's nice, sometimes you see the deer run by and if you run fast, you can outrun the coyotes.
And, and, hey, the educator in me will say that education attracts people to contribute to the overall success of the plan. So I think, you know, when you look at the partners you have involved in this project, I mean, and the Charter School being one of them, considering where they're located in the city, there, there's a buy into that as well, so I think- considering where they're located in the city, there, there's a buy into that as well. So, I think that's, that's great.
Maybe someday we can get a beach down there.
Maybe.
Bring Dave's beach back.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Public Works, the transation has been adjourned.